Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Counselor.
Here.
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 Um, announcements, do any counselors have announcements this evening?
Nope.
And we have no public hearing this evening, communications, Mr. Mulder.
Uh, just two items were included in your packet, uh, one was the letter from Mortenson, um, asking for their application to be removed from the planning and zoning commission, um, in November. And then the second one is, um, a certificate of substantial completion from DSGW and Kraus Anderson relative to, uh, the North Star Ford Arena.
Thank you, and could you summarize the presentations that were delivered at pre-agenda?
Sure, um, we started with Kevin Orham, our director of finance and administration, um, went through the budget booklet, the online budget booklet, um, just so you could see where, um, the various sections of the, um, budget were and how it was laid out, and so that just give you an update about that, and then we have the, um, budget hearing on December first. And then, um, we presented just an update kind of on the Hawkline Business Park, um, specifically as it relates to, um, some infrastructure improvements we're making up on, uh, Leveque Bypass and Uggstead Road, um, and a grant application that we're making for some potential changes to that road there, which is, uh, Resolution 175.
Thank you, and now we have public discussion. This is the time for individuals to address the council about any item not on the agenda. The time limit is three minutes per person. I have a list in front of me of people who have signed up. Uh, first would be Jeffrey Donahue, and after him, Paul Buckington. Jeffrey? And we have another list coming.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Donahue, I live at fifty-five forty Pine Hill Road, Duluth, Midway Township. I'd like to talk a little about the data center. We have, uh, the Stop the Herman Town Data Center, uh, organization now has, uh, knocked on doors, maybe a thousand homes. What's interesting is virtually every single household is against data center. The website now, I'm told now, has forty-three hundred followers. Forty-three hundred, interesting, interesting numbers, huh? Over ninety percent, probably ninety-five percent of the people surveyed now are against the data center. There's a saying that sometimes things have to get worse before they can get better. This is the worst, right here, this is the worst. NDAs, really? Public servants signing NDAs? That's abominable. It's unethical, it's inappropriate. And to say you should be ashamed goes a step too far. Or not a step too far. I'm gonna suggest y'all resign. City staff, city council, mayor, your services should no longer be required. I don't live in Herman Town, but I'm enraged anyway because you're attempting to build a data center down the street from my house. In a residential community, so how big is the data center? It could use as much as one point two gigawatts of power. How much power is that? Well, the state of Minnesota right now has the capacity for seventeen point eight gigawatts of power. That's total capacity. So you're talking about a potential of seven percent of what the state now has the capacity to produce. That is equivalent to four hundred twenty thousand residents, which happens to be the residents of the city of Minneapolis. One business could use as much as all the residences in Minneapolis put together.
Thirty seconds.
One. How, how is that possible that you don't know that? And if you don't know that, why is that? So to say that you have been lied to by city staff, you five people, you five gentlemen, is an understatement. I can't imagine that you know the truth of this data center that's been proposed. And if you don't, you have the responsibility to tr- to verify all that information.
Thank you, sir. Paul Buckington. Okay, if we can hold it down, we won't be taking away from someone else's time. Paul Buckington and Ken Malanson is on deck.
Paul Buckington, Stark Junction Road. How long has this been going on? I just basically heard about it about two months ago. I live within a half mile of this. I'm surprised that nobody reached out and talked to the neighbors, sent us any information. It's, we're zoned agricultural. I don't know if the animals would appreciate all more buzzing or whatever's going on. That's all I got for now.
Yeah. Sam, can I, can I, can I come over there?
My name is Ken Malanson, I live on the St. Louis River Road in Midway Township. This data center, this proposed data center, um, is gonna be probably six hundred feet from my house, I'm, I'm gonna look out my living room window at this. And I just wanted to say that I have family members with asthma, I'm allergic to things. And, um, we're vehemently opposed to this data center. The other thing is, I have property in Adolf, I've had it for forty years. And I just got my property tax statement the other day, and the taxes went up eighty-six percent. And I'm really wondering if other people have gotten tax statements in Adolf that have went up eighty-six percent. It's all BS.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Colmeyer, and after that is Derek Strum. He's not on the list, but, uh, on the first list. He was on there. Go ahead.
Kathy Colmeyer, five-seven-five-seven.
One please.
Kathy Colmeyer, five-seven-five-seven, St. Louis River Road. Um, I just wanna talk about, um, how I feel about the Fortune Fifty companies that are, seem to be getting richer and more powerful. They want us to follow their rules, not our rules. For example, insisting on signing NDAs, pushing government officials to bypass more thorough environmental studies, such as the use of an AUAR, and then promising tax revenue, jobs, and the funding of infrastructure, such as water and sewer extensions. But at what cost? In some communities, such as Celine, Michigan, these companies have threatened to sue the township if the zoning change is needed to build a data center, did not pass the township board. Makes one wonder if the city of Herman Town was threatened in a similar manner. Also, the BLM zoning guidelines for Herman Town were rewritten to accommodate a large industrial project, a CIDP, Commercial Industrial Development Project. The two hundred and thirty-four acre site is not suitable for a large industrial project for a number of reasons. It's a wooded residential area that includes a flood plain and two sensitive trout streams. Residences would be subject to eight to ten years of construction noise. This site selection is wrong, and it's time for us to stop, evaluate, and determine what is best for our city and the surrounding community. Oh, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, Derek Strum. Derek, and I've been told someone else ceded you their three minutes.
Yes.
And that person, is he, is that person on our list? Okay.
If, if I happen to go over.
Yeah, so we've got six, if you need it.
My name is Derek Strum, five-eight-five-three, Highway one ninety-four. Uh, last week, I, uh, lost my cool in here. Uh, the disrespect that you mayor showed these people when they're trying to voice their opinion is an absolute disgrace. You guys work for us, we don't work for you. We are not your personal piggy bank. We are not raise taxes so we can fund this, fund that. There is a, back in the eighteen hundreds, eighteen ninety to be exact, Blair Mountain, West Virginia, there was a coal mine up there where a corporation came in and tried to bully the people. And you wanna know something, that was the largest conflict in US history bef- other than the Civil War. The US military actually dropped bombs on the people because they were armed and going against corporations and the people like you. When the people unite, we stand together, and you guys are nothing. We give you the power. You don't have power, we give you that power. The data center approval happened because of two things. One, either the five of you up there are too stupid, or two, you're getting financial kickbacks. Because when you look at what's going on here, you have the majority of the population of this city saying no. If the, if the information that they are giving out is actually correct with what they're using as far as water, why not put it dead smack in the middle of the Superior National Forest? You wanna know something? They're not going to do it. They're not, because just like the jab, when they said it was completely safe, you have people dying of myocarditis right now, this data center is not safe. Blackrock has taken over Minnesota power. We all know that. Our electric bills have already gone up due to this state's going green. And they're, they do not want to put the cost up, they're making us consumers put the cost up. Now these data centers, once they are complete, the, on average, they increase people's electric bill nineteen percent. You gonna foot that bill? They tend to put these data centers in what they consider low IQ, low income places, because they feel that people do not have the courage or the strength to fight back. I've already contacted our state representative, Pete Staber, I am waiting to hear back from him. And right now, people here, it is time to take our town back. We have two choices in this town. One, we can file a petition within City Hall and recall all five of these members. Or two, we can let their terms run out. If we let their terms run out, two of these members are up for reelection next year. So to the city of Herman Town, I promise you that I will be transparent. I will give the people a voice. I will not cower down to big corporations, and I will give the people a voice on what they choose to have in their city. My name is Derek Strum, and I am running for city council in twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. Okay, folks, let's, uh, hold the clapping. Next is Jim Cluckert, and after that is Thomas Cooper Bates.
People get quite passionate, my, my name's Jim Cluckert, uh, two zero six North Eleventh Avenue, um, West Duluth. Um, people get real passionate here, um, and that's understandable. Um, I'm trying to be a voice of reason here, but people get passionate because they view the data center as an attack on their home, on their community, and on, and because of the nature of the process, on the, on, an attack on democracy. Because this has not been a transparent process. Now, people get heated, and they're gonna say nasty things to you folks, but I believe that you folks are basically well-intended. People do not get into community service, which is what being on the city council or mayor is. People do not become law enforcement, people do not become teachers, except that they wanna serve the larger public. So I believe you guys are well-intended. I also think that anybody who steps into the public arena, there's gotta be a certain amount of ego. And I say that because I know that I'm happy to get up and talk, and be the center of attention for a little while. But I'm here to tell you guys, and it's all guys, that the folks downstream from you, people from Duluth like me, are not happy about what's happening up here. And the longer this goes on, the more money will be lining the pockets of your political opposition. So if there's enough ego up here that likes sitting where you sit on the council or as mayor, you might wanna think about how long you wanna let this go on, because this is not a winning strategy for an individual. I wanna thank you for your service, and, um, let's not let it go personal, but, uh, there you have it, thank you very much.
Next is Thomas Cooper Bates, and after that is Andy Pelland.
Hi, my name is, uh, Thomas Cooper Bates, that's the name they want me by. Um, I live at fifty-three sixty-nine Morris Thomas Road, I get a little nervous up here. Um, in Herman Town, right next to the cemetery. Um, you know, a, a couple of things, uh, come to mind. One is that you, you do serve when you come to, come to be, you know, city council people. And there is a bit of sacrifice to it, and I wanna thank you for it. Shocking, isn't it, somebody come up here and actually thank you for serving as city council members, but I mean it. Um, the other thing is, uh, these data centers, near as I can understand it, are noisy things. Um, there's, there's, the noise is divided into two areas. One is, is above fifty hertz, that's easy enough to block out. Below fifty hertz is a, is a deeper sound, and that's what'll carry, and it'll carry about two and a half miles. And we won't be able to get away from it very easily at all. And it will bother people, I'm afraid, it will, you know, this will be a problem if they build it. Um, the other thing is, if the power goes out, they need to, they, they can't have a break in the power. They can't lose power in a data center, so they'll have to have backup power. And you guys know all this already, probably, but, um, the diesel generators that they use, they run at about ninety decibels. That's a lot, that's loud, that's, that's real loud. Anybody, has any of you been alongside a, a diesel gen set when they fire up a big one? Yeah, they're, they're quiet and peaceful, right? It's like time for earplugs. The, the jet-powered gen sets that they use are even louder, they're about a hundred dBs. And they pollute. Um, the diesel generators, we can put, uh, scrubbers on them, catalytic converters like we use on our cars and trucks. The, the other ones, they don't tend to because the EPA doesn't require it. So we get real fine particulates, and we get noxious nitrates out of them. We do, and that's making people sick wherever these things have been installed. And I hope this thing doesn't come. Um, it's got a lot of issues, a lot of things that we would need to work out with the company. We really would. Um, we don't wanna make people sicker, and we don't wanna make people crazy. And thank you very much for my three minutes.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, next, Andy Pelland, and after that is Robert Colmeyer on the second list.
Uh, Andy Pelland, five-eight-three-one, St. Louis River Road. I'm concerned about the data center, I strongly encourage you stop pursuing the data center build. The people you represent clearly do not want it. From what I've seen, the only people that want this data center either believe you'll lower our taxes or stand a financially gain with this, most of the people not being residents of Herman Town. Please listen to the people and the community, thank you.
Thank you, next is Robert Colmeyer. Did he give you two of his three, or go ahead for six? Well, only one person can cede time, okay.
Uh, my name is Robert Colmeyer, I live at fifty-seven fifty-seven St. Louis River Road. And right now, as far as I know, I still live three hundred feet away from the, uh, property of the proposed data center. Um, my comments tonight are sincere and meant to be taken positively. They're not directed at the city council, but at Mr. Dan Lesser regarding his letter dated November tenth to the city of Herman Town government. I will address Mr. Lesser's last sentence. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the city of Herman Town to ensure the project reflects the values and priorities of the community while meaningfully participating in the public process. Therefore, um, Mr. Lesser, in its current form, respectfully, the Herman Town data center project does not reflect the values of our community. Its jobs are attractive, but its location is unacceptable. But we do believe it will fit much more sustainably, a little bit further north on the Iron Range, where the jobs will follow. Our vision for the greater Northland region builds on sustainable economic growth, aimed at tourism and recreation, along with jobs they bring to our entire greater Northland region. We can do both simultaneously, and let me explain. First, we value sustainable stewardship of all natural resources, simply because they nurture our every need. We value reuse of already desecrated lands across our Northland. The Masabi Range contains a hundred and twenty miles of numerous vacated iron ore mine pits, wastelands that could be reclaimed to serve the economic growth of heavy commercial industrial development projects like data centers without impacting existing residential communities. We do not value more unsustainable destruction of our lands on the scale your large industry demands. We value the greatest of Great Lakes, Lake Superior. Its freshwater is shared by hundreds of thousands of people in neighboring communities, including Michigan, Wisconsin, and Ontario, Canada, the city of Cloquet, Herman Town, and cities along the North Shore of Minnesota. We value our many inland lakes, the BWCA, the many rivers and trout streams, which provide recreation such as camping, fishing, and boating. We value our renewable re- uh, forests, our many snowmobile and hiking trails, and our world-class ski hills, cross-country ski trails, and designated mountain bike trails. This entire region is a natural, all-season family tourism destination for enjoy- enjoyment by people from near and far. We emphasize that everyone needs a place to get away from it all, and this region has the green space to fulfill that need. Visitors love it up here. The economy of recreation and tourism is booming, and it is still in its infancy, it has room to grow. We need to build on sustainable economic growth, the growth model, and not the model of more concrete paving over massive amounts of land and the mowing over of families who reside in their wake. There is plenty of less intrusive places for heavy industry. We value wildlife of all kinds, these critters do not have a voice in human affairs, and we support them in their fight for survival and in their natural habitat. They are what makes our Northland uniquely wild and attractive for visitors. Next, we value elected officials and public servants who live up to their oath of office, as well as their pledge of transparency to whom they serve and their pledge to work together to serve and build our community. Unfortunately, this has not been our experience here in Herman Town. Our entire community has been let down every, in every undemocratic way. It ain't right that a veteran and former community builder like me is treated like a dirty shirt. We are respectful community members who value honesty and openness in government affairs, and we value timely written and verbal dialogue with those who represent us in our democracy. When the vote is fifty-one to thirteen, we expect the majority to be heard and heeded. We know that when elected officials ignore the will of the people, civil disobedience becomes a justifiable response. We do not value going down that road, but we will do whatever it takes to fight for our voice and our homes. These things are sacrosanct to every human being. We appreciate and value our need to be allowed a lengthy review period to study all private business plans and documents, particular when, particularly when they pose such a great impact on established residential districts. It's unconscionable to think any of us was given due process, which is necessary for learning about the true impact. We do not value the use of NDAs in any sort of public-private business affairs, period. In January, we reached out to Mortenson as was requested, but was
Thirty seconds, Bob.
We were roadblocked by NDAs when its impact, when it impacts us, like this project already has. We value dialogue throughout the process, not afterwards. Mr. Lesser, we know you have additional plans for our region. If you seriously want to partner with residents, we ask that you share with us your vision for a positive, long-term, sustainable future here in the Northland. Be honest and open, we challenge you to inspire us. And we hold you to honor your company's pledge to us. At the end of the day, we want to be
Sure.
Home for making sure the built environment has a lasting positive impact for customers and communities they serve. We value the same.
Thank you. Thank you. If, if we keep the noise up, we can take a ten-minute break. Okay, next is Emma Rickman. And after that, Joanna Bates. Jo, did you cede your time? You, you'll be next.
Hi, Emma Rickman, fifty-two fifteen Chris Drive. Uh, I'm a little, uh, nervous being up here, so if anyone has like a minute, they would be willing to cede, that might help me deliver, uh, the majority of my message. Um, since storytelling has been used by this panel as a way to connect, I thought I would share a piece of my story in hopes of doing the same. It takes great strength and vulnerability and time to speak out in opposition. I struggle to find the balance between my roles as a wife, mother, and newly-minted community activist. And then other things in life throw you, things like a spouse who has to work long hours, or a toddler who every time I leave for one of these meetings pleads, please mommy, don't go, to the point where he's having nightmares in the middle of the night, crying out, please mommy, don't go. Or a dog that's likely to be diagnosed with cancer tomorrow at her vet appointment. But still I am here, and still I rise. I am struggling to manage my anxiety since this bomb has exploded. The uncertainty of this project leaves a gnawing feeling in my gut as it eats away at me every day. When you kiss your children or partner goodnight, do you too feel the heaviness in your heart as you know the battle continues tomorrow? It's draining, the unspoken toll this project is already taking. I often walk with our kids and dogs around our wooded property as a way to find respite from the worries of the world. As you crest our hill, you are gifted with the beautiful sight of a far-off mountain, made even more visible now that Minnesota power has cut our lines wider for the new transformer station. I know now, after listening to my neighbors, that this is Oak Hill. The pinnacle of this landscape, and I can see it from mine, is now another trigger. Beneath her summit, the earth will be pillaged for concrete and greed, and I have the vantage point of bearing witness to its hideous evolution. Earlier today, I experienced one of those rare moments that you don't he- one of those rare moments from my property where you don't hear the trains or Highway Two or the gun range, and you are left with only your breath and the very heartbeat of creation. the very heartbeat of creation. The gentle wind, the birds chatting, the leaves crinkling. I had to wonder to myself if those will be lost forever, too. Will its beautiful stillness be overshadowed by the hum and drum of this hyperdata center? My story is not special. It is not meant to garner sympathy, but rather empathy in action. I share it to highlight that every single one of us in the room, including your own, has a story. We are all juggling one thing or another. Does not any of this resonate with you?
Thirty seconds, Emma.
Not necessarily what I am sharing, but has any one thing someone has shared in opposition resonated with you? Has it hit your heart to soften your resolve to push this forward? My God, I cried when Lynn spoke about the birds in his sanctuary, or how Kelsey and her son can breathe while they hear the wind, or how Bob and Kathy planted all those trees many years ago to enjoy their retirement. But if none of this resonates with you, I question your morality. I am asking you to step back and reevaluate what this would mean for our community.
Someone else did already. Someone over here.
Thank you. This project is like no other that Hermantown has ever undertaken before, as far as I am aware. The implications of this monumental, life-changing, environmental-changing project should not be taken lightly. I urge you to put this hyperdata center to rest and close this chapter of our city's story. Don't treat us like a Fortune 50 company has. We are not nameless and faceless. Or, I'm sorry, we are nameless and faceless to them. They do not care about us. We are but an obstacle. Will you treat us like we don't exist, too? Mr. LeBlanc, you showed more concern whether or not some goats and a few horses would cause problems for neighbors than you did for the people who will be impacted by this hyperdata center. We are standing you, here in front of you. We have names, we have faces. Talk to us, talk with us, hear us. If you do not like how the data that we have come across has been reported, then talk to us. Create a space for constructive dialogue. Our community is showing up in the ways we can to voice our dissent, in spite of the things that life throws at us, in spite of whatever our story may be. Perhaps because of our story, we rise. We do not want this to become part of our story.
Thank you. Next is Joanne Bates. You don't, okay. Clarissa Eck. And after that, Eric Enberg.
Clarissa Eck, 3505 Solway Road, Hermantown. Good evening, council, again. I thought about how I would use my three minutes tonight to voice my opposition to the proposed data center. Would I apply to your sense of humility, to your sense of community? Would I show you more numbers on your voting records? Would I point to the fact that this proposed data center is bigger than UMB? It's bigger than the US Bank Stadium and the Minnesota Fairgrounds. It's bigger than the City of Evolith. Would I point to the nearly 1,700 pages of documents released through the data practice release referring to the data center project since at least September 2024? Dozens of Project Loon meetings hidden from the public on purpose, changing references to Project Loon to Adolf, making changes to business light manufacturing, changes to communication facilities to allow businesses and industry to run 365 days a year, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Should I point to where Tim Ressberg asked in April of 2024 to all of you if the changes were to accommodate a database, data center, and where Mayor Boucher said, "No, it wasn't" when we now know that you, Mr. Mayor, knew this was a data center as early as September 2024? Should I point to all the data centers that have been built before this, showing that the promises of data centers fall flat? The benefits are not borne out. However, the detriments are real. The problems, the pitfalls, the pollution, the decreased property values, the detrimental health benefits are real. Instead, I'm going to point out that we are not going to stop fighting this project. I'll come here week after week. We will continue to listen to the rhetoric calling our homes green spaces. That was rude. We are going to be watching the budget, the expenditure of tax-funded public funds on legal fees. That is legal fees to fight against your own constituents, to pay legal fees to fight the residents who elected you and who have overwhelmingly told you they do not want this data center. We're watching. It is sad and disappointing to me that the developer, Mortenson, pulled the permits after listening to the public, and you, elected to represent Hermantown, continue to push this agenda. I will leave you with this, and if you've heard it before, my apologies. Imagine driving down a one-way road, say Second Street in Duluth, and you're driving, minding your own business, and a car starts heading towards you the wrong way. You start honking, you're flashing your lights, you're waving your arms, saying, "Hey, you're going the wrong way."
Thirty seconds.
And the car passes safely, and you breathe a sigh of relief. You keep driving, and a second car starts heading towards you and also going the wrong way, and you start doing all the same things again, honking, waving your arms. But then, when a third car heads your way, it is then that you need to stop and realize that it is not, in fact, the other cars that are going the wrong way. It's actually you. You're the car going the wrong way. In this, it is not all of us going the wrong way. We are all not wrong in this. We are all not ignorant to the benefits of this project. We're not against development or progress or technology. We are not uneducated. I'll wrap up in just two seconds. We know what a data center brings, and we do not want it.
Thank you.
It's a project that's going the wrong way.
Thank you.
I ask you to turn this car around. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Enberg. And then, Bria Shiminski.
Hello, my name is Eric Enberg. I'm at 5425 Morris Thomas Road. I just wanted to take a little bit different tack tonight, and first of all, thank you all for your service. I did want to go ahead and talk about the data center, but from a different perspective. Assuming that there is going to be 500 megawatts worth of electricity going through this, and maybe more, that equates to 40 billion BTUs of waste heat per day. That's the equivalent of 15 billion cubic feet of natural gas per year. And Duluth, by comparison, uses a third of that, or 5 billion cubic feet of natural gas, to heat all of its processes. This is a major source of heat, and moving it to residents along Morris Thomas Road with the extension of Planned City Services from LeVake to the data center would be giving people who are the most impacted by this project a tangible benefit in the form of free or reduced heat costs. So I encourage the city council to do three things. One, lay claim to the heat with an ordinance which claims first dibs to it. Now, you can exercise your option if you wish, or you can give it away, but the city really does need to have first dibs on industrial waste heat in this town. Secondly, while extending city services, lay down pipes for an eventual heat district using fourth-generation heat district technology. You can cap the ends for now, but while you've got an open trench and you're putting in other utilities, put in some pipes, because that will be very useful, and it will really cut the cost down. And finally, if there is a working group established for this purpose, I would be willing to volunteer for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bria Shiminski, and after that, Mary Bergen. Thank you. And you are? Thank you. After that will be then Megan Elling. He'll start it when you start talking. Thank you.
Bria Shiminski, 3483 Stark Junction Road. Hello, I'm speaking here today as an extremely concerned citizen, community member, and most importantly, mother, in regards to the proposed data center. A little bit about me. My husband and I found our dream home five years ago. Throughout these five years, our family has grown. I have a seven-year-old daughter who is creative and loves to explore nature, a four-year-old daughter who is my strong-willed and competitive one, and my two-year-old son who is sensitive, yet an absolute daredevil. We have loved raising our family here thus far.
Would you like to take a few seconds? You stop the clock. Whenever you're ready.
You could find us exploring our woods, going on bike rides down the road.
Go ahead, Jo.
Checking on the river, or playing in the yard. We love living in the country. Recently, our lives have been shaken hearing about the proposed data center and the serious effects it will have, not only on our family, but the environment and surrounding communities. The data center we propose is less than a half mile from our home. Many of my concerns... Sorry, this is very... I'm not good at this. One serious concern I have is a little research on what kind of long-term health effects this data center could have, not only on adults, but my children. Do we know the long-term health effects? From what I've found so far, the sound of them can be a lot of harm, as well as pollutants filling the air. I feel we should take the time to see what other communities are experiencing from these data centers, but we even think to jump on this bandwagon express. There were a handful of people that have spoken at past meetings, have worked in data centers or with AI, and have said that they would never want to live near an AI data center. Why is this? What could happen? In terms of the sound decibels, were these protected decibels calculated in summer or winter where sound travels much further? What about the sound when the hundreds of backup generators and air coolers are going? What will the decibels be then? How will the sound decibels affect the wildlife in the area? Is it going to scare away the bees? I have a feeling many of you have children or grandchildren. Do any of them live close to this proposed data center? Would you want this for your children or grandchildren? Do you think it's fair that the surrounding communities directly affected by the data center will not receive any benefits when it's completed? I have some requests. Please say no to the data center. Please vote no to the permits. Please gain our trust back by listening and taking care of your constituents. Please don't destroy our earth and its resources. And please don't make my children and family an experiment. Thank you for your time. Sorry I had to deal with the crying.
Thank you. Next is Jackie Dolan, and that completes our list for this evening. Jackie? Name and address, please. Name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Jackie Dolan, 5842 Old Highway 2. Good evening and hello again. My comments and questions are in random order, but all equally as important to me. Hopefully, they will plant some seeds and give you some things to think about and ask about. To be clear, I'm against the data center. As the city council now knows it's a data center, what research have you been doing? Are you doing your homework? Does it concern you that city staff signed NDAs and hid this hugely controversial project from you for well over a year? Or did they let it slip and you knew all along? Either way, it's not good and reflects poorly on the city. Construction, dust, and noise, how will you limit? What penalties will be in place? And oh my God, eight, 10 years, seriously? Midway Road is already a disaster with trains stopping traffic 20-plus times a day, and now you want to add hundreds of construction-related vehicles to the mess. Cooling technology is new, so prime for issues. What contingencies for when it fails? Will wells, rivers, streams be safe? What recourse will there be when a coolant leak happens? Remember several man-made disasters like Exxon Valdez, Three Mile Island, BP Deepwater Horizon, the Love Canal, Gulf of Mexico Dead Zone, and the Flint Water Crisis, just to name a few. What I'm trying to get at is data center technology is new and the risks not fully understood. Unions. I'm a union member and have been for many years. Studies are starting to show that AI will replace jobs, not create them. We will get short-term gain for long-term loss. Union labor may build, but are there any guarantees regarding union jobs after? Will these jobs be here or remote? How many, for how long? Remember that Minnesota Power is no longer Minnesota Power. It's BlackRock. They are no longer locally owned. I don't believe they have the Northland's best interests at heart. Minnesota basically says the more the merrier on the power grid. Minnesota Power's Julie Pierce was quoted as saying in a recent WDI article that "The more customers that Minnesota Power has, the more customers we can share the costs of electric service with." Why should I have to share the cost of this monster project after it's built? How many times have our power bills risen in the last 10 years? We are not as protected as Minnesota Power wants us to think. Why do we keep building these electricity-slurping behemoths? So we can use AI to mine Bitcoin, or help us write reference letters or resumes, or to run budget documents through them to make them better? Can't we think for ourselves anymore? Minnesota's Clean Electricity Standard has become state law in 2023 and requires electric utilities to provide 100% carbon-free electricity by 2040. What will Minnesota Power have to build or destroy next to meet this goal, and how much will rates have to increase to raise the money to do so? They were recently denied a double-digit rate increase, but still managed to get a hefty increase approved. And finally, wetlands are beyond important and play a crucial role in our world. The EPA states on their website that wetlands are "among the most productive ecosystems in the world comparable to rainforests and coral reefs." Wetlands play an integral role in the ecology of the water, said. These are the few of my many thoughts and questions I have that I hope you will thoughtfully address and hopefully use to say no to this data center. Stop wasting all of our time and dollars pursuing this. We don't want it. Just say no, please.
Mr. Graves, is there any other list? Is there anyone who's not on the list that signed up that wishes to speak, who hasn't spoken? If so, please step forward and state your name and address.
My name is Tim Ressberg, 3646 Midway Road. And I don't know if any of yous got that letter from Mortenson for a neighborhood meeting at the Grand View. And they had that little QR that you were called in and mentioned it, and they said within a half a mile. The original letters that came up before were 350 feet of this project. While there were so many people that called in for that meeting at the Grand View, they not only canceled that one on the 12th, and then on the 13th, they canceled the one at the YMCE in Hermantown. Now, can you imagine any reason why they did that when they were having so many people that were coming in to ask them questions and find out what was going on? Because of all the lies they've been telling everybody and the mistruths on a lot of things. You've had questions, Mayor, coming up a few times about what happens when they do that blasting there for that database, for what's going to happen to people's wells for a few miles around that are going to come home from work, no water, or wake up in the morning with no water. Nobody has come up with a plan on who's going to replace the water for these people. Then it's been brought up in front of yous guys before about the property value of people's places going down. Taxes up. Price of electricity is going to be way up. And you, the city councilors, have decided not to answer anybody's questions. And now, is Mortenson going to come up and tell us some more fibs about what's going to be happening on this project? They wouldn't come out and tell us the width, the length, or anything on any of these buildings. They finally did come up and say the height might be 50 feet after they destroy all the woodlands around. The people are going to see the light pollution and hear the noise pollution, and yous guys don't seem to have a care or concern about it. And I don't understand why, because maybe it isn't happening in your backyard or whatever.
Thirty seconds, Tim.
But there's a lot of people within a few miles, more than a half a mile, the 350 feet, there's going to be a few more miles quite around that people and citizens of Hermantown, Solway Township, Midway Township are going to be affected by this. And it would be nice if yous guys would try to listen to some of the residents that are going to be suffering through this for a little bit of gain. And then plus, we've also heard
That's three minutes, sir.
... sales tax, they're not going to have to pay it, but the rest of us people in Hermantown are going to have to pay the sales tax.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Name and address, please.
4454 Mackey Road, Brookston.
Name.
5711 Bruno Zagar. Bruno Zagar.
How is that first name spelled?
B-R-U-N-O, just like Bruno Mark.
Okay.
Bruno Zagar.
Z-A-G-A-R-T?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I came today because I'm just concerned. I've done environmental reviews for a good part of my life, 28 years. I'm an environmental specialist, an environmental policy and planning degree. So I review a lot of projects. I worked for the Fond Block Band. I've worked for the Oneida Tribe in Green Bay for 30 years, doing environmental reviews, environmental impacts, reviews for projects. And has this project only And has this project only received like an alternative urban area review? Is that all they did for this project? Or did they do an environmental assessment?
A U A R.
Okay. It should minimum have an environmental assessment. If not, an EIS, an environmental impact study, because it's not considering water use, electric use. You know, when you look at any environmental review for a project of this size, it's like the study that was done is like doing a review for a subdivision. When you have an industrial operation going in like Silver Bay. You know, it's the residents are going to pay for this. And water usage, they're going to pay for this. And the impact to the roads, the traffic, the noise. In the future, you're all going to be paying for this. Each one of you on the board. I feel bad for you and for all the residents. That's why I'm here today. I saw this and I was just appalled that it's not being reviewed at a higher level. So that it protects you, you and your job. I know you try and do the right thing like I do. I've served as a member on boards on a couple of states. And I'm on the Midwest, I'm on the Midwest Tribal Energy Board for the Midwest. I am on a Public Utility Commission for all the tribes in Minnesota. I, I think you should look at this further as far as a next step up for an environmental review. And then the people behind me won't be as pissed off at you as they are right now. I can, I can feel what's in the room and I could see it on your face that you're concerned. I see everybody concerned in this room and I would just kick it up a notch. Just let a full environmental review be done for this project and then everybody will be, feel a lot better about the whole project. And that's all I have to say. I just came here because I was concerned and saw what was going on. I thank you for your time.
Looks like we're going to have at least two. One of you guys, please.
I'm Megan Elling and I'm at five nine six nine Morris Thomas Road.
Last name was spelled?
E L L I N G.
E L L I, thank you.
I think this is less an argument about being for or against data centers and more an argument about public employees and officials trying to push a heavy industrial facility into a residential area and seeming to rewrite the rules to fit their needs and desires. The Planning and Zoning Commission changed zoning definitions on March eighteenth of this year to include communications facilities as part of the light manufacturing zone. Immediately in that same meeting, after approving the zoning ordinance text amendments five zero, the city of Hermantown brought forward the proposal to rezone fourteen parcels from S one suburban zoning to business and light manufacturing, which we all know ended up being approved last month. In both of those proposals, the meeting minutes say, Eric Johnson, who is the Community Development Director of Hermantown, stated that the city of Hermantown has been working on an update to the comprehensive plan. As part of that work, the city is proposing an expansion of the BLM Business and Light Manufacturing Zoning District in the southwest area of the city. The city of Hermantown changed the comprehensive plan to accommodate their needs for a data center in this location. They changed it without the steering committee, who should be required to be the group that presents the city's comprehensive plan. This could potentially be a violation of the law. Additionally, to be able to fit a data center in the area they wanted, it appears it needed to be zoned as light industrial instead of what it really is, heavy industrial. Hermantown's zoning code says of heavy industrial areas, this district and its uses should be located away from residential districts or natural areas subject to environmental concerns. If it was zoned as heavy industrial, it seems objections could be raised to the proposed location since it is both in residential districts and natural areas where it can't be for a light industrial communications facility. I also argue that it is not at all a light industrial facility, but very much a heavy industrial facility. Heavy industrial facilities are classified as such based on their large size, high energy and water consumption and that their impacts extend beyond the property boundaries. It appears the city of Hermantown rewrote their zoning ordinances specifically for this project, classified it incorrectly as light industrial to avoid objection, and rewrote the comprehensive plan without the steering committee to attempt to push this project through by any means necessary. I argue this proposed facility does not belong in this location with an area of mom-and-pop businesses like Stokies and among residential areas as it is a heavy industrial facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name an address, please.
My name is Sarah Lowball. I live at fifty-five oh-two Hermantown Road. And I am here once again to express my concerns over the proposed data center. And at this point, I feel like a broken record. I could rehash my dissatisfaction on how this project was handled, how the city was approached with an idea to build a large data center over a year ago, how certain members of city's administrative staff manipulated the process to have every step leading up to now ready, paving the way to accommodate an easy approval for this project. I could bring up my concerns for the environmental impact of replacing wetlands and forests with four, four-and-a-half-story buildings and non-porous concrete surfaces. I, how the cold-water trout streams in the areas would be negatively affected, how sound and light pollution will affect neighboring residents both in and outside of Hermantown, and how the size of this project is unprecedented in this area outside of mining and airports. But in all truth, my biggest disappointment is that the city council seemingly didn't expect the massive response this project has garnered. That the residents of Hermantown and surrounding communities wouldn't have a vested interest in who is trying to build here and for what. And instead of getting in front of something that could be so dividing long before landowners were being courted, comprehensive plans were being modified to conform to zoning ordinances, and environmental reviews were being approved, our city council is now trying to play defense against their own constituents. Instead of having a public hearing at the beginning of this process, residents have been left speculating, worrying, and attempting to gather as much information as we can based off of other communities' experiences. Instead of having a public meeting with residents to allow them to ask their questions, residents have been left to interpret what little information is on the city project website. I believe it would be prudent to have a real discussion to allow for question and answer that these city council meetings and individual meetings do not provide for the wider public. This process could have been handled much better than it has been. And it's not just the proposed project that leaves much to be desired. So again, I am going to ask you, if residents of Hermantown show up to three city council meetings and voice their opposition in inviting a Fortune fifty company to build a 1.8 million-square-foot data center complex in the middle of a rural area, will you stop the project? Will you stand by your own words and listen to your constituents? Thank you.
Please start with your name and address. You're the only one, I guess. Come on. Name an address, please.
My name is Allison Zagar. I live at forty-four fifty-four Mackey Road, Brookston, Minnesota, five five seven eleven. And I know what you're thinking, Brookston, what does this have to do with you?
Zagar, Bagar.
Zagar, same as my dad over there, Z A G A R. Yes. So Brookston, what does it have to do with me? Well, this data center affects us all. Water is life. We must protect it for generations to come. I work in Piedmont area. I drive past the proposed data center daily. My family and I have been getting our drinking water from Midway Well for over half of my life. The Midway Well is just adjacent to the data center coming in. So yes, this data center is concerning to everyone, not to mention the environment and those without a voice or a say, wildlife, wetlands, et cetera. I'm not good at public speaking, so I'm getting nervous. I'm just going to continue. I want to share something that happened in our neighborhood. The county wanted to cut down sixty-year-old, sixty-plus-year-old pine trees to maintain the road. Those pine trees speak to you if only you sit and listen. Those pine trees are our history, our future. It was not necessary to cut down the pine trees, so we objected, our neighbors objected. And when we did, they told us not to take it personally. Well, I'm here to tell you that this is personal to us all because water affects us all. So a lot of us up here are getting passionate and emotional, nervous, et cetera, because this is passion, this is, this is, this is our future. This is, this is, this is important to us all. Just like the pine trees that they wanted to cut down, water is our history, water is our future. One more thing, they didn't tell us about the pine trees or they didn't tell us about cutting down the trees. We found out that they were cutting down the trees when we saw them cutting down the trees. So again, just this like not knowing what's going on until it's actually happening. My address is twenty-four miles away, and frankly, that's not far enough. And this is only the beginning. So just look at what's happening and look and listen to everything that everyone is telling you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name an address, please.
Hi, my name is Isabella Dinicolla, D I N I C O L A. I live at one oh-two South Seventeenth Avenue East in Duluth. So I came to the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I want to talk about the data center. So usually when I talk in front of city council, I prepare something to say. But I didn't do that this time because I kind of thought, well, you guys probably aren't going to listen to us anyway. So why spend my hard time crafting a response that appeals to your emotions or gives you facts that you guys already know? I just want to say that all these folks in red, all these people, we don't want this data center. There are over, I think, around four thousand people in the Stop the Hermantown Data Center Facebook group right now. None of them want it. I'm speaking for all those people who couldn't attend. And there's really not much I can say because all of you already know the negative impact that this data center is going to have. You already know. I don't have to, I don't have to rehash it. And signing NDAs to not discuss the project was absolutely disgusting. You are here to serve your constituents. I said this last time. You are here to serve your constituents, not to serve massive Fortune fifty companies so you can get some sort of monetary kickback. Because why else would you go forth with this project? There are almost no benefits to building this data center. So I hope that all of you actually listen to what we are saying and vote no on this data center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council at this time? Last opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak to the city council at this time. Okay, we'll close our public discussion. We have motions and ordinances ahead of us. Why don't we take a ten-minute break to allow the chamber to clear of anyone who wants to leave? If any of you want to stick around for the ordinances, you're welcome to do that. We'll just take some time so we aren't trying to do business while people are trying to leave. Agenda. Moving on with the consent agenda, it contains minutes. Approval or correction of November third, twenty twenty-five, city council continuation minutes and accounts payable, approved general city warrants from November first, twenty twenty-five through November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of eight hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars. Do we have a motion relating to the consent agenda?
I think a motion to.
Motion by Council Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Council Jelly. Roll call, please.
Council Geisler.
Aye.
Council Jelly.
Aye.
Council LaBlah.
Aye.
Council Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Ordinances, we have the second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash nineteen. An ordinance amending Hermantown Code of Ordinances by amending section three fifty, accepted and opened streets and roads. Is there a motion relating to this ordinance?
Move to approve.
Motion by Council LaBlah to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Council Peterson, Mr. Mulder.
So this is an update of an existing section of the code where we put all of the roads that we've accepted over time so that we have a standard list for that. So we're just updating that based upon some recent new roads in the city.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any, is there any public input on this ordinance? Any public input on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen? Last opportunity for public input on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one nine. An ordinance amending Hermantown Code of Ordinances by amending section three fifty, accepted and opened streets and roads. Roll call, please.
Council Jelly.
Aye.
Council LaBlah.
Aye.
Council Peterson.
Aye.
Council Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. The next three ordinances are first readings. We will not be voting on them tonight, but there will be a period of time for public discussion if anybody wishes to address them. Ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash twenty, an ordinance renewing a franchise granted to MediaCom Minnesota LLC to construct, operate, and maintain a cable television system in the city of Hermantown, setting forth conditions relating to the continuation of the franchise, providing for the regulation and use of the cable television system, and prescribing penalties for the violation of its provisions. Is there a motion relating? No, there's no motions tonight. Is there any public input on this ordinance? Now, this is an ordinance renewing the cable TV franchise fee for another ten years. Is that correct, Mr. Mulder?
That's correct. We've had a franchise agreement with Minnesota, excuse me, with MediaCom for in excess of twenty years. This is just renewing that for a ten-year period.
And this does contain a franchise fee covering cable TV subscriptions, but not internet use?
That's correct.
Any public input? Oh, getting confused here. We'll move on to the first reading of twenty-five dash. Public input, let's have it. Twenty, any public input on the MediaCom Minnesota ordinance? Any public input on the cable television ordinance to MediaCom Minnesota LLC? Last opportunity to comment on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty? Anyone? Moving on to twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. An ordinance granting to Minnesota Power a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, repair, and maintain in the city of Hermantown, Minnesota, an electric distribution system and transmission lines, including necessary poles, lines, fixtures, and appurtenances for the furnishing of electric energy to the city, its inhabitants, and others, and to use the public ways and public grounds of the city for such purposes, and prescribing certain terms and conditions thereof. Mr. Mulder?
So again, this is a franchise agreement with Minnesota Power. We've had a franchise agreement with Minnesota Power in the very same form in excess of twenty years. It just allows Minnesota Power to use our right-of-way for their infrastructure.
Thank you. Is there any public input on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one? Name an address, please.
Eric Enberg, fifty-four twenty-five Morris Thomas Road. The franchise fee for utilities, electric utilities, has been used in many cities to, for green energy, for clean energy purposes. How much money are we getting from the franchise?
The franchise fee is the next ordinance that'll be on the agenda. They were separated this year from this franchise agreement. So this covers the poles and equipment and things.
But the quick answer to the question, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. And it's used primarily for streetlights and, and the power that goes to, for streetlights and for traffic signals. That's the primary, historically, that's been the primary use.
It was a streetlight fee.
I see. It may be a little bit late in the game, but. It may be a little bit late in the game, but honestly, I think you might be able to do a little better than that. Minneapolis, Duluth, et cetera, have bargained for quite a bit more, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you. That's something worth looking into. Are there any other comments on the ordinance granting to Minnesota Power a non-exclusive franchise?
Can I just ask a couple of questions? Is that allowed?
Sure.
Okay. Is that any, in any way related to the data center, like constructing lines for the data center?
It's not, other than the wires and the lines go to the Minnesota Power substation at some point.
Right, okay. Is this like a yearly readoption of an ordinance, or what is...
Every 10 years.
Every 10 years. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions and comments? Anything else from the public on ordinance 2025-21? We'll move on to first reading of ordinance 2025-22, an ordinance imposing a franchise fee on Minnesota Power. Mr. Mulder?
Again, this is, for the last 20 years, this has been included exactly, directly into the franchise agreement. This year, we have separated it out. And just to be clear, the franchise fee is actually passed on to the residents on their, on their monthly bill, so.
And is that still a dollar per month?
It's two.
Two?
Yeah, off the top of my head, it's two.
But the fund that it pays for is the streetlight fund at this time, which initially, several years ago, allowed us to put streetlights at every intersection when we had none in the, in the complete darkness. And that's been our policy, to have those lights at every intersection. And also, this has been used to pay for traffic signals, stop-and-go lights, and it also pays for the power that goes to them, that's used by them. He's looking up the amount of the fee.
And Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Mulder when he's done looking.
Yeah, it's $2 for, of course, I knew that was broken out, but it's $2 for both residential and commercial.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Mulder, just to clarify, the franchise fee is really just a pass-through and it's paid by the...
Really, for the most part, yes, yes.
So raising, getting, trying to get more money from them would just...
Raise people's bill.
Can we, can we lower it?
We can ask for an accounting and look for ways to see if that's a possibility.
Certainly. We, again, we've used this in the past for the streetlights and traffic signals.
Any other questions from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance? Do we have any public input on ordinance 2025-22? Any public input on the ordinance imposing a franchise fee on Minnesota Power? Hearing none, we will move to resolutions. Resolution 2025-171, resolution approving pay request number 17 for the North Star Ford Arena to Kraus Anderson Construction Company in the amount of $727,401.87. Do we have a motion relating to this resolution?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LaBla to approve, Mr. Mulder?
So this is for our work done at the North Star Ford Arena during the month of October. Usually, we see that in the first meeting of the month, but because of some vacation on the part of K.A., they didn't get it done in time for the first meeting, so that's why you're seeing it tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd also comment that I toured the building last week, and it's looking great, and it's gonna be a great asset to our community, asset to our community, and look forward to first games in early January.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution 2025-171? Is there any public input on the resolution approving pay request number 17 for the North Star Ford Arena? Roll call, please.
Counselor LaBla.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelli.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution 2025-172, resolution repealing an assessment from parcel number 395-0010-05738 related to road improvement district number 541 and 542, Hermantown Road and Bridge and Old Midway Road. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Peterson to approve, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Counselor Jelli, Mr. Mulder.
So at the last meeting, you approved the assessment roll for Hermantown Road and Old Midway Road. During that conversation, I was reminded that I had forgotten that we had talked about the issue of this particular parcel is contiguous and is a single use of another parcel, and we have done that in the past where one owner has contiguous parcels, it's one use, we've combined those. We had talked about that. I had not caught it when we adopted the assessment roll, so this is just correcting it, my repealing it for the one parcel.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution 2025-172? Any public input on the resolution repealing an assessment for the Hermantown Road project number 541 and 542? Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelli.
Aye.
Counselor LaBla.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, resolution 2025-173, resolution approving the removal of restrictive covenants on city of Duluth-owned property and placing them on city of Hermantown Road property. Do we have a motion relating to this resolution?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor LaBla, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder. Do you want Mr. Johnson to explain this one? Mr. Johnson.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a 2009 resolution, which added conservation purposes, restrictive covenants, onto properties within the city of Hermantown. Unfortunately, at that time, there's a type on the legal description. It listed Section 1 as opposed to Section 12, which it should have been. So what ended up happening is those covenants were placed on city of Duluth-owned land inside the airport proper. So city of Duluth recently came across this, and they are requesting the removal of that covenants, and staff will verify and make sure that those restricted covenants are placed on the proper city of Hermantown-owned parcels.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Is there any development on the parcels that will be getting the restrictive covenants?
No, there's none.
Making sure we're not putting anything in violation.
Any, any other questions or comments from council? Any public input on resolution 2025-173? Any public input on the resolution to remove restriction, restrictive covenants on city of Duluth-owned property and place them on city of Hermantown-owned property? Last opportunity for public input on resolution 2025-173. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler, excuse me, Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelli.
Aye.
Counselor LaBla.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution 2025-174, resolution approving the release of Memorial associated with parcel 395-160-0030. Is there a motion relating to this resolution?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelli to approve, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder, would you like Mr. Johnson to address this?
Yes, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Great, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On 2016, as part of the development of Square 37 by Titan Premier, there was a development agreement that was entered into that basically outlined the requirements for road utilities, setbacks, lot sizes, that had been approved. So as the prop, as the project went forward and the land was eventually platted, those agreements actually transferred over to the individual lots within that development. So city staff recently received a request by one of the property owners within that development to remove those covenants associated with that development plan. They're gonna keep the existing special use permit that was also associated with this. They're just looking for the removal of that development plan, i.e., once again, road utility setbacks, et cetera, that way. There are eight of the properties in this development. City staff can look to remove those from those, those properties as well at a future date. I would also like to state that in the staff report, there was an erroneous map. It had listed LeVake Road, and it should have been Uggstead Road.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution 2025-174? Do we have any public input on the resolution approving the release of Memorial associated with parcel 395-160-00030? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelli.
Aye.
Counselor LaBla.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, we have resolution 2025-175, resolution authorizing the city of Hermantown to provide municipal support of a St. Louis County grant funding request by the Minnesota Department of Transportation Local Road Improvement Program associated with the reconstruction of Uggstead Road, CR 284, and LeVake Bypass, County State Aid Highway 48, as part of the Hawkline Business Park. Is there a motion relating to this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LaBla, Mr. Mulder?
I'm gonna try, and then we'll have Eric and/or David jump in if necessary. So we have talked about some possible infrastructure changes at the Hawkline Business Park going on for about two years, and more recently, the landowner, in discussion with the landowner, we looked at the possibility of changing some of those infrastructure plans, and what we've kind of come up with is a proposed change to the county road, LeVake bypass, and we want to apply for a state local road, we want the county to apply for a local road improvement program grant to help fund that infrastructure change.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public, any public input on resolution 2025-175? Is there any public input on the resolution authorizing the city of Hermantown to provide municipal support of a St. Louis County grant funding request? Roll call, please.
Counselor LaBla.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelli.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Mr. Mulder, is there any reason for a closed session this evening?
There is not.
Next then, we have a motion to recess.
Make a motion to recess?
Motion, motion by Counselor Jelli to recess, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LaBla. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign.